For Corey Valley Unified School Districts, please stand and face the American flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
A motion has been made. Any discussion?
Just to add to the, about the play starting tomorrow, I'd like to put in a bid for it at Polten High School.
Okay.
Could that be something Kristen just talked to Judge Voland during the principal report?
Sure.
Because there's really no action that the board will take.
Board will take on it just in preparation.
It's the high school.
Yeah.
I don't know if you could, or Linda.
What time does that start, Linda?
6:30, the doors open at 6:00. $10 for adult, 5 for kids, and I think under 5 is free.
Okay.
Under 3, it's, I don't know. Right?
Yeah.
There you go. Already did it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. General public comments. Do we have any members of the public online, virtually? Nope. Okay. Moving on to consent agenda. I need a motion to approve approval of the minutes from number. Motion's been made. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Approval of the check warrants. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been made. Any discussion? Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. The superintendents and principal reports are packets are in, are in our packets. If you take some time and review them, that would be greatly appreciated. We're going to be moving on now to...
I think one principal needs action.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, go ahead, Jen.
I had asked last time that I could come back with a senior class trip. They would like me to propose two options and see if you would be okay. They would like you to either consider a trip to Montreal for them, which is actually considerably cheaper than the trip to Boston. The dates of the trip would be Thursday, the 29th to Saturday, the 31st in May. They have everything paid for. They have figured out that going to Montreal is cheaper during that time. And the people in the class have figured out like what they would need for documentation, who has enhanced licenses and passports, and they would be able to cover all that as well. So in my report shows the Boston trip, but they did want me to ask previous Proctorian, it sounds like West Rutland have taken trips to Montreal. I didn't know if that was something that the board would allow, and so they would really like me to advocate for that. And so that is what I'm doing now.
I'm personally fine with it as long as you can get them back into the country afterwards.
Well, we Proctor students in Canada, yeah. We need their numbers for enrollment anyways, so.
I just don't want any phone calls.
Is there a preference?
Their preference is Montreal.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion's been made. Any discussion?
How many students?
Well, it'd be a total of 26 people. There are 22 in the class that would be going. And then there is one student that's unsure if they actually want to go. Three chaperones, and then you have to pay for the bus driver to stay overnight, so.
Okay.
All right.
Any further discussion?
They will very much appreciate you all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Have fun. All right. Now we'll move on to old business. I have nothing further to report on the tennis court, so I guess we'll move on to new business. Transportation for RTS students to Corey Valley High School.
So this, we had a parent come to the meeting last week, asked the board to consider the transportation of Rutland Town students to Corey Valley schools. I think one of the concerns that people expressed were how many of Rutland Town students do not attend our Corey Valley schools? And so this parent said that one of the possible barriers or obstacles is that just transportation. And so would the board be willing to consider transporting Rutland Town students to one of our three Corey Valley schools? And so we put on there just for further discussion and whether or not the board wanted to take action, consider, or just table us for...
Do we know what the cost would be to do that, Lewis?
So I did provide a cost in the budget document. It is $307 per day for a total of $55,000 for the year.
How many students are we talking about?
I was going to ask the same.
Well, so the question, we currently have four Rutland Town students. The question would be, would this generate more Rutland Town students? And that's really an unknown.
Is it just one of the Corey Valley schools?
That would be to transport to all three Corey Valley schools. They don't transport their kids now. Currently, parents are responsible for transporting secondary students.
Are they tuitioned? Would they be considered tuition students?
We have four Rutland, yes, four Rutland Town students that are attending Corey Valley schools.
And do you know how many of them are outside of Corey Valley schools currently?
Oh, there's approximately 170 Rutland Town students, yes.
So I believe, I think it's like 80% of the students go to Rutland High, so.
So you need about four to break even then, wouldn't you, just to, just to cover costs? Four to five, four to five, four and a half?
Yeah, three, yeah, three and a half, something like that.
I think we can have to know an approximate number of how many would potentially be interested in that in order to decide if it's feasible.
So maybe an approach would be to do some sort of survey there and approach the parents and ask if, what the bear, it'd be nice to know, just not the busing barrier, but what are other barriers to why they're not sending their kids to a, to a Corey Valley High School?
And that's a loaded question, I know.
That's a large one, tuition only.
Yeah, they have school choice.
It's huge. It's huge. It's huge, yeah. It lessens opportunities that we can provide.
For sure.
When you look at the Rutland Town geographic region, there's a lot of options for high schools. You have Mill River, Otter Valley, Rutland City, and then the Corey Valley schools.
We lose kids to Burn Burton from, from Middletown Springs and Wells.
And Rutland Town is being, has seen a shift, a big shift the last few years with the number of, the percentage for Rutland City, Rutland Town students going to Rutland City was a lot higher, but there's been a shift to private schools over the last couple of years for Long Trail. MSJ has been increasing significantly.
I mean, what is, how does the board feel about that approach, maybe asking?
And I just want to say to the board that if we were to consider this, we currently do not transport Middletown, Springs, or Wells Village students to, we, they have one bus that runs to Polten, but not to West Rutland nor Proctor. So if we would open that up across the SU, we'd have to also consider transporting Middletown Springs students, Wells Village students, also to our three high schools.
I'd rather transport them to, to West Rutland or Proctor than the river.
We'd have to consider, I think, the SU students, particularly Wells.
But that's a cost that's already in the budget, right?
The cost to transform to Polten is in the budget, yes. That's, that's been done for many years.
So all that would be is just expanding that to two other schools?
Correct.
Yes. It wouldn't be using the same buses, so the cost would be a lot more. The thing with the Polten bus, the reason why they've always done that is because the Polten border goes pretty much all the way to Wells and Middletown, so it's not much further for them to continue that route to pick up those students.
From Center of Wells Village, it's, it's like 10 minutes to Polten High School. Same for, same for Mill River.
It's faster for me to get to Middletown.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, for you, yep.
Because I'm right at that border.
Yeah.
Would Rutland Town be willing to pick up some of that cost too? Because nobody else trucked, like Otter Valley, Mill River, MSJ, they don't go get Rutland Town students either, correct?
There are some high schools that do run buses to pick up students. I know Long Trail has always done that. Rutland Town couldn't provide transportation because once they opened that door to provide transportation to our schools, then they would have to do it for all of their secondary students. And that's why they're coming to us. From us, it's, it's a revenue generating standpoint, so we can do it and pick and choose who we're going to do it for because we can see which schools students want to come, or which towns students want to come to our schools from. But once, once they do it, and for one, they have to do it for all, otherwise it's discrimination.
So you're wanting to send somebody to Woodstock or someplace like that, so, yeah.
And I think she said when she was here that one school currently does.
She said Otter Valley does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sitting in a bus. I think they have a location where everybody has to, it's pick up and drop.
Yeah.
So it's not like they're picking you up different places. That's where you go.
Does that have an impact on the cost of the bus if it's door to door?
Well, that's because of Brandon Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh, Otter Valley.
This cost is picking them up at Rutland Town School.
Ah, okay, got it.
And then sending them to our school.
Yep, got it, okay.
Well, I think the other cost, then we'd have to know what, if we were going to transport Middletown Wells students to West Rutland or Proctor, what that cost would be. And how many students currently go to those schools?
I could look that up in a second. It'd be nice to know how many students are sent to Mill River that don't go to Polten. Maybe some of them would change and go to one of our high schools outside of, inside of our supervisory union.
They can get a bus from Middletown to Polten, right? Yes. Yeah, so they already have the access to the bus, it's just choice that they're making.
Right, to go, either go to Polten or go to Mill River. So they, their bus to Mill River from Middletown, or from Middletown. Wells doesn't have a bus though, but I don't believe, do they, that that goes to any other school but Polten?
Granville?
It's a Polten.
Oh, they do send it to Granville?
Yeah.
But that's a Polten bus, right?
Well, Polten is sending the bus to Wells, it's not a Wells bus. And Granville is sending a bus to Wells. It's not a Wells bus. Granville's sending that bus.
Because they're tuitioned over there.
There's currently, we're estimating three students to attend West Rutland from Wells Springs and 11 from, or 11 are going to Mill River.
So, I mean, do the math on that tuition.
None at Proctor.
We could come back for the January meeting and have the cost, this additional cost, we should also consider IRA. So they have our SU as well, if we have students who are, you know, who would like to attend our schools, but transportation is an issue. And we'll just put that cost in there for consideration.
And then maybe think about what we could put, what we could do for some sort of survey on why, why other SU member schools are sending their kids outside of our, our high schools. I think, I think that's a really important step to understand where their parents, how their parents, one, perceive us. That's probably a major aspect of it. I know it was for me. When I had that opportunity in Wells, if I had my way, Cora would have been going to Burn Burton. So I think, I think that it's really important that we, we open that door and kind of find out what, what we need to do on our side to attract, you know, students, more students from the SU to our schools.
I agree entirely. As someone who went outside of the district when I was in school, for sure.
Well, I think we've also seen when we get tuition students, that tuition is a consideration for ninth and 10th grade. Once they become 11th and 12th graders, then we've seen students that didn't come when they didn't drive. Now that they do drive, parents are much more...
Flexible.
Right. Yeah. So I think, I think transportation is, is a huge component.
I would say we've had three students shadow this year from Rutland Town and our parents, their, like stepping point for us is transportation.
Okay, great.
So do we need a motion to move that to new, to old business for next time, or just leave it?
No, I think we just asked the superintendent, Lewis, to provide the numbers for us.
Please, I don't want this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Once I get my classes on. Finance. Monthly financials.
I'm just making notes.
Okay.
So the first thing is looking at announced tuition. So there was an announced tuition report in the packet. Every year, we have to set a tuition rate for both our elementary school and our high school. This is the rate that we would charge for any non-resident students that are attending one of our high schools. So I've listed both our current rates as well as some of the comparables for, for area towns, as well as my recommendations for rates for next year. So I'm currently recommending $17,500 for elementary school. We do not have a lot of elementary school students being tuitioned in. Most of them that are, are IRA students that are going to West Rutland. And then $20,000 for our secondary rate, which is where most of our students, that's the level that most of our students are being tuitioned in at.
And the $20,000 at the high school, if the student receives services or specializes, that still allows for bill backs to the district, correct?
This would be the general ed piece, and then if they're specialized, it would be specialized costs on top of it.
Yes, thank you.
I make a motion that we accept $17,500 for elementary and $20,000 for high school for tuition for '20, '25, '26.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
So next item is budget. So in your packet was draft two of the Corey Valley budget. The first sheet does show the summary of changes, which are the items that have changed since last month. Based on the feedback of the last month, I brought it back, a budget which shows education spending at 6%. The items that are included in here that were not part of the last month's first draft budget. Updated tuition revenue based on new estimates. We added a Gen Ed Para at Proctor Elementary School due to a class size need. The next item is just FYI, the cost of transport to Rutland Town students, which we covered already. Vocational tuition has been updated. This is still an estimate at this time, based on the numbers that we have received from Stafford. We have not received the official six semester rolling average, a number that comes from the AOE. We expect to receive that in the next week or two. I don't anticipate a huge change, but it can change. And that is resulting in an $80,000 cost increase. And that's due to both a four and a half, four and a half percent increase in the Stafford budget, as well as an increase in the six semester rolling average that we received.
How many kids do we have attending Stafford?
I do have that number.
Or just a ballpark, if you know?
Yeah. I have that, if you give me just a second. So our six semester rolling average is based on 42 students.
Thank you.
It'd be interesting to know in the future how many students that we have that want to get into Stafford and can't get there because of space issues. I mean, that's what I'm hearing, that there, there's some kids that can't go to Stafford because there's not enough room at the technical center for them. Is that, is that accurate?
It depends on the program they're trying to get in. There are some that have a, a waitlist. Right now, I believe that every one of my West Rutland students was able to make the program that they chose.
Okay.
Yeah, Proctor, the Proctor students that applied that met the requirements
Yes.
were able to get in. And a lot of times what Stafford, Stafford will do is if you don't get into a program, they'll give you the opportunity to apply to like a backup program. And that's why they ask for like first, second, third choices, so that you can get into that program. And then once you're over there, you could, if space opens up and you're already in the program, you get first choice into another program. So we haven't had that problem.
You haven't? Okay. Great. Perfect.
That's good news.
So now the next item, so at the last meeting, we had a conversation about adding repairs expense for, for needed repairs to bring the education spending up to 6% and utilizing some of that one-time money, which was the surpluses that are in Arizona's revenue. At the time, this number was going to be larger to bring it to 6%, but with the increases that took place between last month and this month, such as the VOTAC, the Gen Ed Para, it only took $32,000 to bring us to 6%, so, which isn't much when you look at building repairs. We also had a conversation about potentially going to 7%, so I just added a footnote in there as to what it would take to go to 7%. And that would be 100, an additional $182,000 in repairs. And these would be, we would target specific repairs from our five-year plan, and these would be one-time expenses with the anticipation that next year, when our revenue decreased, we would take these expense lines out.
It's a dog. It's Linda.
So those are all the updates to, to the budget. I also provided a tax rate sheet at the, on the last page. I do want to emphasize that these are just estimates at this time. There are still a lot of factors that are estimates and outside our control and unknown, but I will go through the calculation and kind of talk about each item as we go through it. So this is based on a 6% education spending increase. So we take education spending, we divide it by our equalized pupils or long-term weighted ADM to get our spending per pupil. We currently do not have a number yet for the long-term weighted ADM. We only have received preliminary estimates from the state, which they have guaranteed us those numbers will be changing, so I don't really feel comfortable using those numbers at this time. Those estimates do show our pupil count increasing, but at this time, I'm still using last year's number as, as our estimate. So based on that, we get an ed spending per pupil of 11,327, which is a 6% increase. We then divide that by the property yield. The property yield is that number that the state approves, the legislators approve that usually in April or May. The Tax Commissioner, in his December one letter, has given the recommendation of $8,553. As you can notice, that is a decrease from last year, but that is because the calculation has changed since last year. So we can't do a side-by-side comparison of this year's data to last year's data. So after budgets were already communicated to the public last year, there was a bill that was passed that applies a statewide adjustment factor to both the yield and the CLA. That statewide adjustment factor is based on the state average CLA, which is currently estimated to be 72% for this year. If you reverse engineer that new CLA to get a, what the, what, or if the yield, I'm sorry, the yield, to see what the yield would have been if you didn't apply that 72%, the property yield would have increased approximately 20% since last year. An increase in the property yield brings down local property taxes. So using that new yield, which is an estimate, it can change. We get a tax rate of $1.32. The next piece is to apply that H850 transition incentive. That was something new last year due to Act 127. It was a three cent tax reduction because we were negatively impacted by Act 127. That incentive goes down by 20% each year, so 80% of that three cents is 2.4 cents to get a unified tax rate of $1.30. The last step in the equation is to, to take that unified rate and get a local town rate, and that is to apply the CLA to each one, to, for each one of our towns. So as I mentioned, the, we, the CLA is taking the actual CLA that we have been using for many years, implying that statewide factor of 72% to get the new adjusted CLA. The numbers that you see in front of you, which is 96% for Polten, 98 for Proctor, and West, 97 for West Rutland, those are the adjusted numbers. I did provide further down on the report what the actual numbers are before the adjustment, so you can kind of see a side-by-side comparison from last year. As you can see, there was a very large decrease in CLA, which increases, has a significant impact on tax rates, increasing them. So Polten went from 80.73 to 69, which was a 15% decrease. That means that property tack, property values increased by 15%. Proctor went from 79.61 to 71%, which is an 11% decrease. And West Rutland went from 78.69 to 70%, again, 11% decrease. So after applying those adjusted CLAs, we get tax rates, the final FY26 tax rate, which is currently showing a five cent increase for Polten. A .8% increase for Proctor, so that's less than one penny. And a .06 increase for Pro, for West Rutland, so less than one penny. The average of the three towns is 1.7.
Is summer school included in this budget? In every building?
Each school, or I don't know if they all do, but some of the schools have a very small amount of money set aside for summer schools, which would be for tutoring purposes. It wouldn't be to run a full program, it would be for one-to-one tutoring or small group tutoring based on strictly academic needs.
We have data on that, how that plays out? We track that?
I have qual, or qualitative data that, that say that when we finish summers, or when the end of the high school term occurs, we run a usually seven or eight day getting for a couple of hours a day to help the students meet proficiency. And almost 100% of them do end up meeting proficiency at the end of those seven or eight days. There are usually an exception, maybe every other year of a student, who will not even meet proficiency at the end of seven or eight days. And then we, we have to look for alternatives. They usually end up having to repeat the course, to be perfectly honest.
So at the end of the school year, if they haven't completed the course, we, you provide one-to-one or small?
No, small group, small group, yep.
For another week?
Yep.
Is that what every school does?
No, it's not.
Elementary schools?
Elementary, we provide, well, actually, up until a few years ago, we ran summer tapestry, which had an academic component. Last year with the Boys and Girls Club, we strictly used them for essentially daycare. And we did not have a, an academic component to that last year.
Is anyone expending funds in the upcoming year for summer academy?
We don't have any funds budgeted. We had been in the past running our own summer school program, academic program, and now Boys and Girls Club.
No, I don't have any plans to add the academic component this year.
We've had some initial discussions about speaking with Boys and Girls Club to, to involve more tutoring in their program, so that it's meeting some of the academic goals. I just checked, double-checked the budget, and there is just a lump sum at the district-wide level for summer school, which would be available to all schools to utilize.
And how much is that?
10,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for Lewis?
If we took out the 32,000, what, what percentage increase would we be at?
5.83.
5.83?
Yes.
And what has to be the reduction to get to, let's say, five? What's the dollar amount?
It's a total of 182,000, so minus the 32, it would be another 150.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
What percentage are other schools up in our SU?
So Rutland Town is currently up 3% ed spending. And most of their, their budget was actually down because of a lot of one-time money that they had, surpluses. So they added, they're currently in discussions about how much to add, but their current budget has an addition of $350,000 for one-time facility repairs. Wells Springs education spending is up 2.84%. Again, that's also due to one-time. They have two surpluses, which, and they didn't have, they didn't use a lot of surplus the following year. Total expenses up by 5.5%, ed spending's up 2.84. And that does not currently include any facilities money. And it's, Ira, Ira sort of its own thing, but.
It's kind of an anomaly that doesn't really play into this, so.
And I had, I had in my notes from last time, I was just reviewing, that we asked for the six, we asked, we, last time, we looked at a 5.2, right, in our last meeting, last month. We asked for a 6% because of thinking about what next, next year could look like, right? Is that just to recap?
To reduce some of that one-time revenue.
Right. Otherwise, if we don't, then next year could look.
Very bad, yeah.
Fill in the blank. Very bad, okay. So just recapping that.
Is that a new budget term?
It's a very technical term.
A summary. Very bad.
So, so just when we say, we asked to look at 6%, just kind of recapping, right, that we, we're at, we were asking to look at this number because we're trying to hedge against, and take some action against what could look like a.
Correct. So we're current, just to reiterate, the conversation that happened last year, so we're, we are, or last month, I mean, we are currently utilizing approximately $1 million in one-time money. That's a combination of both local Corey Valley surplus, as well as SU surplus from last year. That's being refunded in next year's budget. That $1 million has an approximate 5% impact on education spending. So if we were not utilizing that money this year, we would be, we'd be looking at approximately a 10% ed spending increase.
It's gonna be an ugly mixture.
And can you tell us again what is in the sinking fund for repairs? Or what, I'm not sure, the official term?
Around seven, something.
Yeah, capital improvements.
Is there any other questions while I just bring that up?
Not right now.
You'll think of one.
We'll just have our comfortable silence.
We're just gonna watch you now that we hear from here.
We have to have a silent pause for effect, Louis.
There is currently 874,000 in capital improvement fund and 217,000 in the co-curricular fund.
217 in what?
874.
874.
Anyone else?
I think 5.8 sounds better than 6. I know it's semantics, but it's also being able to sell it in, I mean, I'd like it to be less than 5.8, but at 874 in the capital improvement, I would be in favor of removing the 32 from the line item. Honestly, that's such a tingly little amount to be able to move it from 6 to 5.8. I think it is well worth doing that.
Especially given the way that the warning is worded again this year.
Yeah.
What were we, what were we at last year, if you remember?
I can let you know.
And is there a reason the meeting is at the Pulteney Public Library instead of the?
No, it's at the high school library. We confirmed that today. We met with the clerks, and it is at the high school.
But the warning's just wrong, then?
The warning's, yeah, Christine already made that correction. This is just a draft, for you to take a look at, but it is at the high school library, where it's always been, so yes.
All right, that's what I thought, but it's just.
It is a nice library, but rather small.
The last year, ed spending was up by 1.2%.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
So at next month's meeting, we will have, we should have final CLAs, so that will no longer be an estimate. I, we are being told that the estimates that we were given are, should be very close to the actuals that come out. The pupil number, we should have a better idea of what that's going to be at the next meeting. Potentially, we'll have a final number. The yield will still be, the item, that'll be an estimate.
And you mentioned, you were using last year's number for the weighted pupil. There's a possibility that there, that might go up, which would have a.
Yes. The number that I've received, the preliminary number, is an increase of approximately 85 students. 85 weighted students.
But we'll see what it ends up being in reality, yeah.
Now, when do tuition students notify us that they're coming? Is there a deadline, or it's right up to the first day of school?
So for, if someone's coming on school choice, there are deadlines, I want to.
School choice, there are deadlines in April, but tuition, you can register right up until?
When you want.
And there are deadlines, but we also know that during the summer, if we have openings, we still will consider school choice students.
Right, right. But I'm just saying, let's say, like, a Rutland Town student. I mean, do, does Rutland Town require them to notify that they're gonna go to Long Trail versus Mill River?
No.
Okay. So it seems like if we were gonna make any kind of transportation changes this year, we're just kind of living on a wing and a prayer. Because there's no way to have any kind of confirmation. I mean, people could say they're coming.
Right. I mean, it depends if the board wants to take a proactive approach or a reactive approach.
Right.
Proactive, obviously, budget for it, and, you know, you may have a bus with three kids on it, or you may have 15 kids on that. So it just, it depends. I, I, you know, I do think that's something we should talk with our principals about, and just, you know, get some feedback, just to see if, you know, we can quickly put together a quick, you know, two, three-question survey around transportation for next year. That, I know that there's a bigger question around school selection, but I think we have to be very careful how we word that. So I think really, for us, the big question right now is, is transportation a major factor in your decision-making? If so, if transportation were available, would you strongly consider one of the Corey Valley schools? And that would give us an idea as to whether or not it makes sense for us to open that up.
And that 55 is in this budget?
No.
Okay.
There's your 32.
That's not doing anything, then, for it.
So the only thing I would say before we move on is to get a consensus from the board. Are we comfortable with the expense side of this? Or are you looking for additional cuts that we should come back for in January? When we meet in January, we'd be looking to get an approval so that we can start preparing the annual booklets, the warning.
Well, it'd be 23,000 if we leave the 32 in there, if we do offer busing, which we could probably find ways to make happen.
If you're gonna be over 6.
Yeah.
So.
But if we do it next year, it could be.
And that doesn't include if you extend, extended the Pulteney bus. There's those costs also.
It might be offset if we have enough tuition students to do it, but if we're at the minimum, or less than a minimum, we're gonna be hurt.
But it's not gonna make any difference in what your, what your percentage is.
Right, right. We won't change the percentage.
And if you surveyed just current Rutland Town students, there is a potential that other students that currently go somewhere else but don't have any siblings there would come if we offered a bus.
Yeah, the potential's there.
Yeah.
I think we gotta explore it.
I do, too. I think we need a rough idea of just how many might potentially be looking in that direction.
But there's no way we're gonna have data before we have to approve this budget.
So back to Louis's point, do we want to leave it the way it is, or are we looking for them to cut?
I mean, is that a higher priority item than something else on this list, right? If we were to swap that in?
Move money around, so to speak.
If we're gonna go with that this year, we should probably do it this year, thinking about next year being, I mean, with what the legislature is dealing with. I think it's better if we do the 5.8 this year. I mean, I'm not happy with 5.8, but rather than, you know, try to lower it this year and then we're, you know, everything is screwed up next year. So I kind of think going with the 5.8 might be a better idea this year. And I do agree with Lisa. It's like when you buy a car for $39.99 to $4,000. People do, you know, look, I know, but they are, they will look at that. So I think 5.8 is a good percentage rather than 6.
Well, that means then we have no option to do the transportation.
So could we get a couple, could we get a couple of budgets around the 5.8? One has transportation and one doesn't?
So, so you're saying then if we look at 5.8 with transportation, we have to look at what we would be cut to.
I mean, prioritizing transportation is a way to generate revenue, right?
No, I'm just saying, that's fine. I just want to clarify, and that's okay. That's, we're prepared to do that.
But transportation going both ways, the Pulteney piece and the Rutland Town.
Yeah, that's, yeah. We can provide that. I just want to make sure we add the right information.
Yeah, just so we can see what we'd be looking at.
No more paper documents.
Well, the other thing to look at, too, is, I mean, are we taking a gamble and only putting the expense side in? I mean, if the purpose is to generate revenue, then potentially, we can put an expense in and then an offsetting revenue, if we think that's gonna bring students. And so it should really have zero budget impact, but it's a gamble, because we could have a bus and then only have one student.
Right.
Right.
Right. And that, the first year.
I mean, for the first, right. For the first year, it might not, right.
But, I mean, for budget purposes, I guess, I suppose we could put both the expense and the revenue in at this time, and then as we're getting, we can do the research over the next few months, and then determine later in the year whether it's something we, we want to initiate after we do our research and figure out if any students are, if it's gonna worth, be worth it.
And buses will go to all three schools? We could look at that option.
Depending on need, yeah.
We might use a FedEx option where they'd be, hey, come to West Rutland or something and get on a different bus, but the bus is going back to Pulteney, so there's, there might be options.
My opinion would be that, just based on the geographic distance, that, I mean, you probably won't have many, if any, going from Rutland Town. It's almost 40 minutes from Rutland Town to Pulteney. Depending on, because they would have to get to the school first, because the pickup would be at the school.
And we're also operating on the assumption that Betsy can get the drivers. I would have to say, that's just a reality.
Right.
That's what my question was next, like, how realistic are we?
Sure. I mean, well, like I said, we could do all this preparation. We find that we can't run two of the buses because we just don't have anybody to, to drive. That's just the reality of just day-to-day life here in Vermont, so.
And there's also no harm in not, not putting it in the budget and still continuing to do the research, because if we decide that we want to move forward with it, then it'll have an offsetting revenue, so it should not have a budget impact.
Agreed.
Okay.
And I will say, like, a lot of schools, when you are at Rutland Town, you're touring around, they will tell you that they will offer busing if enough of you sign up. So it is not uncommon for you to hear that as a Rutland Town parent. So it is something that.
Because who, so Long Trail provides busing.
Yeah, and Mill River.
And Mill River, and Otter Valley.
Otter Valley, yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like it's silly for us to not look into it, at least.
And the number that, the minimum number to sign up, I'm assuming is what they need to.
To clear it and then make the money. I'm sure it is. They don't tell you, but it's like, there's enough of you, we will bus you here. And it's like, hmm, that's enough of us.
A little peer pressure.
Yeah.
Right.
Parent peer pressure.
But if that's something we're going to do, then I think that's something we should decide this evening. So that's information that we could start getting out there. And if we're going to address it in that capacity, that we're not going to put it in the budget, we're simply going to offer it and look at it as an offsetting with the revenue, then that's a decision I think we should make, so that information can be shared out by building principals and shared to these other schools, which might, you might even see an increase of people starting to come and visit schools shadow and those kinds of things. I mean, the longer we wait, we're just hurting ourselves.
I'm for it.
Me, too. Using that model of.
Using the model that, don't put it in the budget, that go ahead and offer, but it's offset by the revenue.
Right.
Knowing that the first year, it's possible we may have to eat something just.
To get it up and going.
Yeah. I think in the long run, it could be very beneficial.
Okay.
It's just like a jet engine. Lose money on it and make it afterwards.
Is it how they're made? That's scary.
That is how they're made. They may not have the replacement parts. She leads a whole other discussion.
Never fly again.
So do we need to make a motion for that? So building principals, so that is information that can start to be collated and put together that can be shared out to schools?
If the board feels comfortable with that, then you can just direct myself to, to let the principals know that we can share the information that we.
I think it's a great starting point, and just keeping in mind that this is just gonna be the baseline the first year.
Unless we want to, do we want to try to share a stipulation that a certain number of people need to sign up in order for it to run? I mean, that's really specific. I think it's, language is kind of.
Well, I think that data has, right.
I actually have it written down. I don't know why we wouldn't.
But that would have to come from Louis knowing more specifically what the cost would be. But we could say, tentatively, to make it work, we could say, tentatively, we'd need to have X number of students without handcuffing.
I think if we said that's similar to Jen's, that, you know, and we talked about, if we, we have the right number of students and we provide transportation, if we say yes or no, I don't want a family to say, oh, great, you know, and then we can't have it because we only have two kids, and then they feel that we've pulled the rug out from under them or haven't been transparent. So I do think they have to understand that, obviously, you know, one. So I do think they have to understand that, obviously, you know, one kid's on a large bus, it doesn't make sense for us. Or we have to look at, you know, blending routes, or what, you know, whatever that may be, just, you know, so maybe a shared bus between West Rutland and Proctor, just drop off of West Rutland on the way to Proctor, and whatever that may be, I think we have to look at routes, and somewhere that we do with Stafford, like, we, you know, the Pulteney bus, we share a bus with Fairhaven, just to cut costs or reduce costs.
And this, this number is also based on worst-case scenario for if we needed a new bus, we could also look to see if there's any chance we can use existing buses, but I'm not sure if that's an option at this time. I do believe there is a bus that's picking up students at Rutland Town and bringing them to the connections program, maybe, I don't know, or Proctor, West Rutland, bringing them to connections program.
Yeah, Proctor, West Rutland.
So we can see if those are the options, but I don't know at this time, so there's always a chance that maybe we can get this number reduced, if we can combine routes.
So how about, how about the principals, Chris and you, kind of talk about it some more?
Sure.
I mean, I think everybody can be favorable to that.
Yep. Okay.
Is that good with everybody else?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lisa, is that good with you?
Well, does that mean we are offering, or I don't, I guess I'm not clear on what we're saying, then?
I think we're saying that if we have the-
Number.
Right number of students, then we can offer transportation to our Corey Valley schools next year.
And we could start putting that out there and see if we can-
Okay, that's fine.
Even generate some interest.
Yeah, I think it's just getting it out there, yeah. Okay, I'm good with that. Thank you.
All right.
Moving on to personnel and contract recommendations.
Oh, Eric, I'm sorry, we did have one more thing around budget, I'm sorry, it was just, at the GRCSU board meeting, there was a discussion around putting together a one-page flyer that can be shared, like, a Facebook community page, or that's a Market 32, or at the post office somewhere else, where someone could just quickly scan a QR code, or look to see, and the QR code takes them right to our budget websites. And so this is just a draft, you know, if we're fine with this, it would be fit to the page, so it was just, it wouldn't look exactly like this, but, you know, we've shared this with Rutland Town and Wells already, and they, they like the simplicity of it. If Corey Valley's fine, then we can get this cleaned up, and then what we would do is share out with the board members tomorrow afternoon or Monday morning at the latest, so we can begin disseminating this or sharing this as you see fit.
Looks good.
The thing I'd like to see is under GRCSU is the school's name, that would be nice, so people to look at, they see the name of the schools involved.
Next door, yeah.
That's all, just to-
So we can use a different GRCSU logo that lists, like, somewhere like the one behind you?
So people look at it, they go, oh, okay.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have Shannon just-
Well, you don't see it in the little brown circle.
I know, but if it's up on a wall, the post office, the school names on there, it could catch people by it.
Liam will be excited, he's on the place.
I don't know if the color would make any difference, Lisa.
Don't care about the color.
But, yeah, so-
Orange?
Louis and I will meet with Shannon, we'll have her use that logo behind us that has all the town names on it.
Yes, that's much better, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sorry, Eric, I just wanted to-
No problem.
All right.
Oops. That'll be exciting.
Okay, moving on to contract recommendations. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion's been made, any discussion? No discussion, I'm all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. So moved. Any general public comments? Future meeting date, January 9th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. That's informational. Any future agenda items that we need to bring up? Is there a need to go into executive session?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go, so moved.